Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to open this meeting up. Southern Shores Planning Board, April 21st, 2025, 8:00 in the afternoon. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody got an agenda in front of them? Could I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Jan, second on that?
I'll second that.
Michael seconds, thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. Opposed? None? Okay, the next order of business is the approval of the minutes for January 29, 25, special planning board meeting. Refer back over to those minutes. Any corrections? From anybody on those?
Andy? With apologies, I was not at this meeting, so... But I noticed a couple of things that, at least good questions. Was this Monday, January 27th, or Wednesday, January 29th? It was what?
It was a special meeting.
It was Wednesday. Alright, so the Monday part is wrong. And then, as I say, I wasn't here, so I wasn't sure. And on page... One, two, three, four. In, on page four, in line 161, I think it's lots rather than lost, in the first line there. See that? And then...
On 161?
Yeah.
The line 161? It's across lots, 43 and 44. And then on page six, line 232, Town Attorney Johnny Hallow stated the recombinations would be required in scenarios. I think you need one or two or three. It meant number, a number there. And since I wasn't here, I wasn't sure which one he was directly talking about, but it seemed missing.
Maybe add in the scenario.
In scenarios.
Single, singular that.
Oh, it's scenario one or?
Those scenarios.
Yeah, one.
Okay.
Oh, it is, cool.
But it needs numbers to go along. That was all I saw.
On, on that same page, line 248, this is planning director Haskett stated that the recombinations required in the drafts, ZTA's, and it's possessive. So just strike through. It would be plural, but not possessive.
Right, correct.
That's all I had. Anybody else? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of... Or those minutes on the 29th of January. Did I get a second? Ed, second?
I'll just abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, all, all in favor, or is there any discussion there on those corrections?
No.
All in favor of approving those motions with corrections, say aye. Opposed? None? Okay, moving on. In the approval of minutes, the 31925 special meeting was a transcript. Anybody pick up anything irregular out of the court reporter's transcript? Yeah, Charlie?
Yes, again, page 54, line 22. It talks about County Superior Court trying to, and it should be hide, there's a missing E.
Add an E.
Correct.
So because it's a transcript, the court reporter's gonna have to correct that. Yep, so the clerk can't correct it because it's a transcript, then the court reporter will have to.
I think it's probably obvious from context anyway, but I just voted that.
But we would still vote on approving? As noted?
That's right.
Anybody else in the transcript? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the 3192025 special meeting transcript with one correction? Anybody?
Sure.
Jan, thank you. Second. Anybody? Ed? Okay, thank you, sir. All in favor of approving the 3192025 special meeting transcript minutes with that correction, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. Moving on to the next item of business is approval of the order on case APA-25-01. Town staff has put this order together. And I don't see anything that stands out to me. Does anybody have any correction there?
I would just note whether or not Charlie should participate in this vote, since he was sitting.
Yeah.
I don't... I don't know whether procedurally it switched back to the board's in the context.
So I might be able to help there.
Pardon?
I might be able to help on that question.
Please.
So because the board with alternates or regular members, sitting or not, continues on, just like if the board had membership changeover and there was a hearing that was conducted before, it is presumed that the board member either reviewed the minutes, reviewed the transcript, is apprised the board is a continuing body, so it's not one or the other, so it would be appropriate for him to participate in the vote.
Okay.
Although he may not be able to comment on maybe a specific change, although he did, he obviously read the transcript, so I think he's aware of what should be in the order.
Okay, does anybody have any thing that they want to discuss before we vote on this approval of this order? Which is what it's asking. Anybody have anything that they see that they disagree with in this order? Going, going, going. Well, at this point, I would just ask for a hand vote of those approving the, the order set forth in APA 25-01. Say aye if you approve.
Should I vote?
Yep, yep. So unanimous 5-0 approval of APA 25-01 order. And I guess Lauren or Wes, at this point, as chairman, moving forward, I would sign the order.
That's correct.
Tonight or?
Whenever.
Okay, tonight.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you want to do, but, okay. All right.
Lauren, I did, excuse me. I understood, I believe, what you said earlier, but I was not part of this special meeting. And I'm happy to recuse myself, especially since the alternate member is here that was at that meeting. If you'd rather have the vote, if you thought it would be cleaner and less controversial, I'm happy to recuse myself and allow for him to stand.
I think that's fine. You can do that. I mean, I didn't realize that the alternate and the regular member were here instead tonight, so that's fine. You can do that for sure.
I don't know, do that. If you wouldn't mind calling for the vote again, is that possible?
We haven't voted yet on this order, right?
He did vote.
We just voted.
You're, I think you guys are fine. I was gonna say, I thought that the vote already happened. You're fine, everyone voted, there was no discussion. Even alternates can participate in the discussion, and so I think that, given that and the fact that he was here, everyone's fine.
Okay, so we'll stick with the 5-0 unanimous vote with
That's right.
Mr. McLennan not being here, but a voting member tonight.
Correct.
Mr. Reeves was here.
That's right.
People vote. Okay. All right. Pardon? Just me?
Just you.
Okay. Public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to comment? Come on. All right, old business is none. So we're gonna go into new business, and before we go into new business, I want to read a brief statement, and then we'll...
So just before we get started, Mr. Chair, if I could, I understand we have a, the applicant for the ZTA under the new business is appearing by Zoom tonight.
Right.
And that's pursuant to the town council's ban from public property. So I understand from Madam Clerk that the, he is on and participating. I know you were gonna read a statement about new business, I just wanted you to let you know he is participating and on the Zoom.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that that was entered into the record. So... Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this brief statement before we get going on this. A few ground rules, I suppose. And I would ask if Mr. Mina can hear us. Okay. Mr. Mina, can you hear us? Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
And maybe if he can hear, we are asking that you unmute. You are muted on our end, and you can only unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you might want to get a little closer to the microphone. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I think that's about right. Okay. I'm gonna read this statement. "I want to remind you, Mr. Mina, town staff and board members, that we are here today to examine a request for a ZTA that will benefit and/or serve all residents of Southern Shores. We are not here to relitigate the applicant's previous variance application or his appeal of an administration administrative decision. We will not refer to any individual property in our discussion. This ZTA is not site-specific, and we will treat it that way. Just as the agenda provides, this is new business. I will ask Mr. Haskett to read in the staff report, and then have Mr. Mina present his ZTA. I reserve the right to narrow the discussion if it becomes too broad. The board will have an opportunity to question town staff and Mr. Mina when they have had the floor. Once the board has asked their questions, we will begin our deliberation. If needed, the board can call on the town or Mr. Mina for clarification." Everybody okay with that? Okay, following that order, Wes, if you can read in your report?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The application in front of y'all tonight on the new business is ZTA-2502. The applicant is Anthony S. Mina. The requested action is Amendment of Town Code Section 36-414. The applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment, or ZTA, to amend Town Code Section 36-414 to establish a 90-day exemption for property owners in all zoning districts to submit any applications to the town to seek governance under the Town Code prior to all ordinance amendments adopted within three years of adoption of his proposed amendment. If adopted, property owners would be permitted to submit applications for a 90-day period to seek governance from the town under the Town Code as it applied prior to adoption of all zoning text amendments that affected their property within the last three years. The proposed language would apply to property owners who owned the property, were under contract to purchase the property, rented the property, or occupied the property at the time the zoning text amendment was adopted. In July 2024, the applicant submitted two applications to subdivide the property at 75 East Dogwood Trail that were denied. In October 2024, the town planning board considered a variance application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Dogwood Trail that was denied. In January 2025, the applicant submitted another request to subdivide the property at 75 East Dogwood Trail that was denied. In March 2025, the planning board considered an appeal application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Dogwood Trail that was denied. The proposed amendment in front of you all tonight is an attempt to exempt himself and other affected property owners from having to comply with the lot width requirements established in ZTA 2303 that was adopted on June 6, 2023. Staff's recommendation, town staff has determined that the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan, and town staff recommends disapproval of the application. Please note that prior to adopting or rejecting any zoning amendment, the planning board shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with the adopted town comprehensive land use plan and explaining why the planning board considers the action to be taken, taken to be reasonable and in the public interest. That statement is not subject to judicial review. Since all of the zoning text amendments that were adopted within the last three years were found to be consistent with the town's comprehensive land use plan, formerly just Kama Land Use Plan, creating an exemption from having to comply with their requirements would be inconsistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan. The ZTA, as proposed, does not identify any comprehensive land use plan policies that are consistent with the proposed amendment. That concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of Wes on that briefly? Anybody?
Yes, I have a question, sir.
Okay, before, I do have one question, Wes. The evidence in support of proposed Town Code amendment that we have tonight, where, we haven't read that, so I'm assuming it just gets entered into the evidence as it's presented.
Well, this isn't an evidentiary hearing, it follows quasi-judicial procedure, so there's no quote-unquote evidence. But that material, that document was provided by the applicant, and we provided it to you all.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Mina?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor to present your ZTA, and I just want to reiterate that we want to keep it in a narrow lane only concerning the zoning text amendment at hand tonight.
Thank you, sir. My understanding is that you are going to present my case for a zoning text amendment and all between at hand, but I will do my best to present my zoning text amendment, and I want to
Mr. Mina?
Start it.
Mr. Mina? I'm gonna hold up for a minute. We're having a really hard time hearing you.
Yes. I am offering to do my best to present my case to you. You know what you can do at hand? I'm gonna be using my own words and I will bring it as obvious such as Lauren said. And I'd like to introduce myself to everybody first. My name is Anthony Mina. I'm a property owner in Southern Shores, and I have applied for a variance. Here, I have applied for a zoning text amendment here in Southern Shores on my BDF. It does not prevent other property owners from applying for a zoning text amendment on their BDF when they find out.
Mr. Mina?
Yes.
We're still experiencing a hard time getting... Can you get closer to your microphone and stay there?
I'm not sure where my microphone is.
Well, you're, you're closer because we can hear you a little bit better now, but we, we need for you to speak into the microphone because you, we're losing you if you don't speak directly to the microphone.
Okay, as I was saying, I am a property owner in Southern Shores. And I have just filed a zoning text amendment on my BDF that affects all the property owners in Southern Shores.
It, it's still not working, of course.
Sounds like he goes away to find papers.
Yes, feedback.
Now, I'm like that. Can you hear me? Hello?
No, no, not clearly.
Can you hear me now?
That is much better.
Okay. I was saying that I am a property owner in Southern Shores, and I have filed a zoning text amendment on my BDF not prevent other property owners from filing a similar text amendment. I am not representing other property owners. And I also want to make it clear that I am not working with Southern Shores. I do not have any relationship with them.
Mr. Mina? Gonna interrupt you again. We're losing you. Do you have your phone on and your computer at the same time?
No. I need to have my phone on a second to go for this live call right now.
Well, you gotta, you gotta stay as close to that microphone as possible, however you're doing it, but we're, we are really struggling here.
Well, sir, like I was saying, I am a property owner. I am not a Southern Shores employee. I'm a Southern Shores attorney, attorney's, and I student. Of their attorneys are Southern Shores. I have no relationship with anyone up there at this meeting here. There's some big things, Senate, other meetings that could be interpreted like I had some type of relationship with the town or attorneys there that I do not have, and I just want to clarify that there's no relationship between us.
Okay.
Other than me being a property owner before I get started. Check. Only I wanted to make sure you understand that I do not have any agreement with anyone there under seal of court. If you have an agreement with me under seal of court or my fiancee, Jennifer France, under seal of court.
Mr. Mina, we, we cannot understand what you're saying.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could offer maybe a option so that we can get, hear what he is saying and move, move this along. On the link that he was provided to join Zoom, there's a phone number he can call. So it might be better if he just calls the phone number from his phone, and because we, all we can do is hear him. He's not appearing on the screen. So if he would just call in on his cellphone to the number in the link that was sent to him, we might be able to hear him better.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mina, did you, did you catch that?
I understand what you're saying, but I'm wondering why you're not opening the camera there of me.
The ca, your camera is off, Mr. Mina. We, it just has your name across the front. Everyone else has a screen open, so if you are trying to make a, a physical appearance in your camera, we cannot see you. But more importantly, we can't hear you, and so in order for this to progress, you're going to have to hang up and call that number on the Zoom link, or else the board is not gonna be able to hear you.
I'm calling now, as soon as I can find the phone number, I might be able to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I should log off.
He might have just been on his phone.
Who's got 10 phone numbers? Do you have your name? Do you remember, would you like me to call?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your... Enter your address.
Can you hear me?
You have been added to the waiting list. You cannot view or mute it. You can use or unmute yourself by pressing star.
You're gonna want to mute the other one.
You want to mute the other one?
All right, Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I cannot see you on my phone, but I can hear you.
Okay, well, we can hear you, I think, very clearly now. Board, can you hear Mr. Mina?
We can.
Okay.
Mr. Mina, since we can hear you much better, you are welcome to begin over or summarize what you spent the last five or so minutes telling us that we could not hear.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Anthony Mina. I'm a property owner in Southern Shores. I am filing a zoning text amendment on my behalf, which does not prohibit other property owners from filing a similar zoning text amendment. I do not represent other property. I also am not working with Southern Shores, the Hall Form Riley Ellis and Mallon Law Firm, or Jay Wallace Law Firm. I am not, I have no relationships with Southern Shores other than being a property owner. I do not have, I am not a friend, colleague, client, partner, student, or any other persons besides the property owner of any of these people that I've just mentioned, both two Southern Shores and their two law firms. I do not have any agreements under seal with Southern Shores, and my fiancee Jennifer France also does not have any agreements under seal of court with Southern Shores. If you have an agreement with me or my fiancee under seal, court of seal in Southern Shores or your one of their attorneys, the agreement you have is based on fraud and you need to immediately tell me and my fiancee. Now, I would like to get to my case. I have filed a zoning text amendment which Southern Shores has fraudulently misrepresented on the town website, has not posted notice of at my property, has not published a newspaper pursuant to North Carolina, to my knowledge. They have not notified other Southern Shores property owners using the town newsletter of my zoning text amendment either, which is founded on helping defrauded property owners who had zoning text amendments made against their property without notification requirements being complied with. Another issue of fraud that we have is the evidence in support of the proposed town code amendment.
Mr. Mina, I'm gonna stop you just for a second. We have before us your application with your exhibits, and then we have a more formal document that has the town of Southern Shores letterhead on it and several wherestes. And I'm just, and it's repetitive in these two. So as far as your application with exhibits, I want you to either tell us to look at that or look at the formal document with all the wherestes. Your call.
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask you to go with my application. The document with the wherestes was something Cliff Odburn told me that I needed to submit instead of my application. So I'm gonna go with my application since, like you said, they both have the same information on there, except my application has, it's referenced in there. So I'll go with my application.
Okay, and we may reference back to the actual form that you have it in, which is a bit more of a formality document, which is what we're accustomed to working off of as a planning board. So if it gets burdensome for us, we may switch over to that more formal document that you have. But I want to warn you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you if you have accusations and want to relitigate from previous experiences here. So I want, I want to keep you in a very narrow lane that is about this ZTA and not about grievances that you may have with the town. Okay?
I understand, sir. My zoning text amendment is to help defrauded property owners. And the only thing that I'm presenting tonight are facts. So like if something happened, for example, Wes Haskett just testified that you denied my variance. But what Wes Haskett did not testify to is I appealed my variance. Wes Haskett was ordered by the Dare County Superior Court to provide a complete copy of the variance record number eight within 30 days. Wes Haskett.
Mr. Mina, I'm, I'm. Mr. Mina, I'm gonna stop you right there. What does that have to do with us deciding on a ZTA that would be used for all of Southern Shores residents for their benefit?
Because I'm presenting a continuing pattern of fraud from the town of Southern Shores, specifically Wes Haskett and Cliff Odburn.
That's, that's not what we're here for tonight, sir. We are here for a zoning text amendment that is specific. And I would appreciate it, and the rest of the board would too, that you head more towards that trail than accusing the town or whomever. So let's, let's keep it in a narrow lane, or else I'm gonna keep cutting you off.
Sir, may I get to my ordinance amendment?
Please do.
Read it into the record since Wes Haskett fraudulently misrepresented the zoning ordinance that I applied for.
What page are we on right now with your application?
My ordinance that I applied for states Town Code 36414A. These are my words. Property owners that have been defrauded by zoning text amendments made pursuant to Section 36414 without being notified with posted notice as a property subject to the zoning amendment pursuant to Town Code 36414A shall have 90 days from the adoption of this ordinance to submit any applications to the town seeking governance under the town code prior to the amended ordinance made without posted notice at the affected property. This section applies only to property owners who own the property, were under contract to purchase the property, rented the property, or occupied the property at the time zoning amendment was adopted. This section also only applies to amendments made within three years of this amendment. So what I'm providing here is a remedy for property owners that had zoning text amendments made to their property without the town of Southern Shores complying with Town Code 36-414B, which requires posted notice at their property in addition to the strictures of Town Code 36414A. The facts that I have to support my amendment are this amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because at the current time, town manager Cliff Odburn is refusing to use the Southern Shores newsletter email address addresses to notify property owners that a lot with amendment was made on June 6, 2023 to take the right to subdivide from property owners without notifying the affected property owners with posted notice as required by Town Code 36414A, which means Cliff Odburn is hiding a zoning amendment that was made without posted notice pursuant to Town Code 36414B.
I'm gonna stop you there, Mr. Mina. Does that directly have any impact on our discussion about your zoning text amendment tonight?
Absolutely. There's a reason that the zoning text amendment is filed that helped defrauded property owners. It's because of the deception that Wes Haskett and Cliff Odburn are involved with in deceiving property owners when adopting zoning amendments and when property owners ask about zoning amendments.
I believe that would be called an accusation.
Directly related to that zoning text amendment, I have submitted the remedy, the deception that Wes Haskett and Cliff Odburn have done to this town. That's how my, that's related, directly related to Cliff Odburn. He will not notify property owners of the zoning text amendment that he made without posted notice at their property that affects their property value.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. Mina a question?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Mina, Michael Zener, our voting board member alternate is, wants to ask you a question.
Mr. Mina, I understand your text amendment is predicated on your belief that Section 36-414B applies to text amendments. Is that correct?
Yes, if you, sir, if you look at the evidence in support of the proposed town amendment that I presented, sir, you will see that the section that I referred to says, "In addition, and where zoning map amendment is proposed, town shall cause place a sign on the subject property."
Yes, sir. Can I ask you a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
So when the lot text amendment was adopted, was there an amendment to the zoning map?
That, see the words that say "and" and "where"? Those words don't say "if." So you, so what you're already trying to do is change the words "and" and "where."
So there was no zoning, so back to the question. There was no zoning map amendment when the text amendment passed.
There doesn't need to be a zoning map amendment for Town Code 36414B to be, to require posted notice at properties.
So.
Be rezoning, such as rezoning a subdivisible property to unsubdivisible property.
So there was no, there was no zoning map amendment. There was no zoning map amendment. Mr. Mina, can I finish my question? Can I finish that? Mr. Mina?
I object to your question, sir. I have a case to present.
Can I finish asking the question?
No, because you're putting, you're trying to make a town code have a meaning that it does not have. Using the English language, there does not require a map amendment to require posted notice at the property. Thank you for trying to be deceptive, because that's exactly why I'm here.
I'm, I'm simply asking. Mr. Mina, I'm simply asking you a question.
I'm with your questions. You can ask me questions after I'm done presenting my.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Okay, Mr. Mina.
Yes, sir.
You just did, on your application, you have facts supporting imperativeness of amendment to property owners. You just went through number three, correct?
I just.
On the second page of your application.
Number three, I just read number three.
Right, so we've heard number three. I want you to move on to number four and then five, then six.
Exactly, sir. I apologize. That's not how I plan to present my case.
Well, you know what? I'm the chairman of this, this group up here. We have to have some order, and we are gonna do the order in which you sent it to us, and you can do off of, you can do off of your application, or you can do with all the wherestes in there, but they all match up. One or the other.
Yes, when, all right, well, you see, the evidence in support of proposed town code amendment that I provided, number one goes with paragraph three. Okay, so it would have been answering, it would have been explaining the zoning text code that I was just trying to explain to you. But for some reason, Cliff Odburn won't load this evidence in support of my.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note again, we're getting into the weeds, and this has nothing to do with the text amendment. The text amendment, he's asking for the language and the text to be changed. I mean, all these allegations, these against the town manager, against town staff, against the town generally, have absolutely nothing to do with whether, with the terms that he is requesting to be changed. I just would, I don't believe that the legislative proceeding and hearing is intended for Mr. Mina to have an open mic for an unending period of time to berate the town. And so I would ask that if you find it in your purview to redirect him to the text, the specific text that he is asking to change.
Believe me, I'm trying, okay? Mr. Mina?
Yes, sir.
I want you to tell us which order you want to use. One more time, you've got your application with exhibits, and then you've got the more formal doc with the Southern Shores town seal on it. We have both. But I want you to stay in that order. And if you are accusing or, you know, conjecture, things that are not relative to your ZTA, I'm gonna cut you off.
Okay, sir. My ZTA says property owners that have been defrauded by zoning text amendments made pursuant to 36414 without being notified. So what I'm presenting is a continuing pattern of deception proving.
That's not what we're here for. We're here to decide a ZTA that has none of that in it.
That's how you decide it. You present evidence supporting what you're asking for. I can't help the fact that you don't want to hear evidence that's piling up against Southern Shores, but that's how this law works.
That's your opinion.
I apply for zoning text amendment.
Mr. Mina?
I've applied for zoning text amendment to help defrauded property owners that weren't notified, and I'm presenting evidence.
Mr. Mina?
To prove they weren't notified, yes.
Mr. Mina, we're gonna mute you here in a minute, and we're gonna carry on this, this zoning text amendment without you. You're gonna, you're gonna adhere to the rules, or we will stop this meeting. Do you understand that?
I understand, sir. I'm gonna be publicizing everything you do. So you, I will follow your rules, and I will publicize everything that you try to keep secret, and I will publicize what you allow.
Are you, are you moving on to item four in your?
Yes, sir.
Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Because that's the order that you gave it to us, and that's how we are gonna look at it.
Okay, well, for the record.
Number four.
I need this, sir?
Number four starts off with this amendment is in the best interest of all property owners. Would you like to read that? We've all read it. We know what it says.
Yes, sir.
Then start reading.
Number four says, "This amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because during the time the town was supposed to have posted notice at affected properties of the lot with amendment heard by the planning board on May 15, 2023, the town council on June 6, 2023, Deputy Town Manager Wes Haskett was hiding the proposed zoning amendment from applicant in four emails during the month of May 2023, when applicant was specifically asking about the 75 East Awgwood Trail subdivision and lot with requirements. During the month of May 2023, the previous owner of 75 East Awgwood Trail was able to negotiate an additional $75,000 from applicant for a property that was subdivitable because Wes Haskett was illegally hiding the proposed lot with amendment. Deputy Haskett and Southern Shores clearly are aware of the damages the fraud has caused and has yet corrected fraud caused by rezoning subdivitable property to unsubdivitable property with a lot with amendment that was made without complying with Town Code 36414A."
Thank you. Number five, number five. Do you want to read that? Do you want to read that? We've all read it.
Yes, I'm going to read all of them and then I'm going to.
Okay, go ahead.
My supporting evidence too. Paragraph five says this amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because the nature of the town code of ethics prohibits the town from defrauding property owners intentionally and in the event of a mistake requires the fraud to be corrected. A true and correct copy of the town, the town's code of ethics is attached hereto as exhibit A.
Thank you. Number six. You want to read it or we've already read it?
Okay, number six. This is in amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because when property owners question the validity of zoning amendments made to their property, deputy town manager Haskett lies and claims Southern Shores had illegal basis to amend zoning code. A true and correct copy of a false police report made to Chief Cole by Wes Haskett in violation of North Carolina General Statute four, fourteen, two, two, five, claiming he had a legal basis to amend zoning code on June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three by deleting the strictures of town code three, six, four, fourteen B is attached hereto and marked exhibit C.
Okay, thank you. Number seven.
This amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because when they asked the planning board for a decision to be made about a zoning code amendment amended without the property owner being notified pursuant to town code three, six, four, fourteen B, deputy town manager Haskett lies and states notification requirements were satisfied. A true and correct copy of Haskett's staff report lying about notification requirements being complied with prior to the lot with adoption on June sixth, two thousand twenty-three is attached hereto as exhibit C.
Okay, number eight.
Public records, a public records response from the town proving posted notice was not placed at affected property pursuant to town code three, six, four, fourteen B is attached hereto as exhibit D. So there in paragraph seven, I have the proof.
Okay, no, we've we've heard number seven, moving on to number eight.
Number eight, this amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because when criminal complaints are made against town employee Wes Haskett, please Chief Cole for violating North Carolina General Statute four, fourteen, chapter fourteen, two, twenty-five, false reports to law enforcement and North Carolina General Statute Subject twenty dash one, one, two, false sworn testimony. Chief Cole refuses to arrest Wes Haskett with claims that the crimes are civil matters.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number nine.
This amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because when they pay three hundred and fifty dollars to the planning board to make a decision about a zoning amendment made without compliance with posted posted notification requirement, town code three, six, four, fourteen. The following people fraudulently misrepresent the language of town code three, six, four, fourteen B and are on video fraudulently misrepresenting town code three, six, four, fourteen B at October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four variance hearing one line. And the people's name are county attorney Lauren Womble on behalf of deputy town manager Haskett at one forty-one to one forty-four of the YouTube video, three twenty-four to three twenty-nine of the YouTube video, three forty-eight to three fifty-one of the YouTube video, five oh nine to five eleven of the YouTube video. Planning Board Jay Willis is also on video misrepresenting town code three, six, four, fourteen B at three oh nine to three twelve, three forty-eight to three fifty-one. And planning board Andy Ward, Chair Andy Ward is on the video at four twenty-seven of the video.
Okay, thank you. Number ten.
Number ten. This amendment is in the best interest of all property owners because when they pay three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars to the planning board to make a decision on whether an amendment zoning code can be enforced when there's fraud indicating town code three, six, four, fourteen B was not complied with, the planning board votes unanimously unanimously to enforce illegally adopted zoning code. Please see YouTube video on the March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five special hearing from one oh two to one thirteen and you will see them all vote.
Okay, thank you. Number eleven.
I was done speaking. I was you will see the planning board all vote in favor of something proven to be adopted without notification requirements when their decision.
Mr. Mina, are you on number eleven?
Sir, I paid two hundred dollars for this hearing. May I please finish what I'm trying to say?
Now, we're we're still ticking off your list and ten, you just did ten, eleven comes after ten. So I would like for you to either read eleven or we will read it or we have read it. Up to you. You want to read eleven?
Yes, number eleven. This amendment is in the best interest of the town because North Carolina statutes of limitations for fraud injury to personal property and contract laws three years. The town is currently liable for a class action lawsuit from property owners suing the town for defrauding property owners with zoning amendments adopted to take the right to subdivide property with a lot with amendment on June sixth, twenty-three. Taking the right to subdivide substantially decreases property value according to licensed realtors. The town has refused order to care county to reduce property taxes on the property they have valued.
Okay, thank you. Last one, number or number twelve on your list.
Sir, sir, I'm allowed to say things in support of my case.
We're we are moving down your list. Number twelve is next.
Okay, okay. This amendment is consistent with the town code of ethics and is imperative under under North Carolina state law and federal law protecting property owners due process rights and the right not to be subjected to public corruption crimes committed by local governments.
Okay, thank you. Number thirteen.
I have a question. How am I?
Number thirteen, Mr. Mina.
I have a packet of evidence that I need to read into the record that's.
Number thirteen, please.
All amended ordinances made within the last three years of this B of this amendment without posted notice at the effective property shall be nullified for a period of ninety days from the adoption of this order. These ordinances include but are not limited to DTA two, three dash oh, three and TCA dash two, one, oh, six.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on in your application to exhibit A, which is the Code of Ethics for the Town of Southern Shores Employees. We all have that in front of us. We're not going to have you read that and we're going to flip over to exhibit B. And my question for you is.
Case to you and I'm presenting a case for the property owners in suburb of the town of Southern Shores that have knowledge of my case that I'm presenting. So I do would like to say a few things about the Code of Ethics of Southern Shore.
Wait.
May I please?
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's appropriate.
Hold on, hold on.
I think it's appropriate for you in the matter in one of your roles as managing the hearing and the meeting tonight, not a hearing. This is a legislative decision. This is a little bit different than a quasi judicial proceeding in which participants submit evidence under under oath. They do have to give and have an opportunity to present what they would like to the board. But Mr. Mina has presented all of his information in writing in advance of today's here uh meeting. And I understand that you noted that that you've reviewed it. I'm certain the board members could probably also attest that they reviewed the submissions for the meeting today. So it might be helpful if if you're inclined to maybe direct if there's any specific questions about his text amendment. Because we kind of have this continual conflict where he wants to repeat all of his allegations when and the board is trying to focus on the language that is attempting to be changed. So I guess I would maybe ask Mr. Mina some specific, not me, but the board may want to ask some specific questions about the language he's asking to change and or which policies, because that was the other thing noted in the staff report. What policies are applicable to the zoning text amendment? That might be helpful.
I have a case that I'd like to present.
So noted and we're we're getting there, believe me.
I know, I just.
But like I said, Mr. Mina, we have the Code of Ethics before us. We are not, we understand him. We've read him several times and we're going to move on to exhibit B. We have read exhibit B and seen it. And the next exhibit is from you is exhibit C, which is the staff report from the October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four variance application. I said we were not going to go there. We're not going to relitigate your variance or your appeal. So as we move through.
Sir, I'm not relitigating anything. I'm just providing certain precise facts from each for each statement that I've made in my case. I'm not asking you to relitigate anything. I'm asking for you to let me speak and present my case and then allow then I will answer any questions that you want to do. Because as of right now, Cliff Ogborne won't add evidence that I've submitted in support of my case.
I'm going to cut you off. You you are you are making accusations that you have no concrete proof and furthermore.
It's in my email, sir.
Mr. Mina. Mr. Mina.
I have a I have a.
Mr. Mina.
The concrete proof is.
Mr. Mina.
Yes, sir.
You are having a bad time of interrupting people when they are talking. And if you interrupt.
I apologize.
Too much more, we're going to hit mute and we're going to decide this without you being involved. Okay, we're trying to our best to get to the point where we can talk about the ZTA and I feel like that we're there. So.
I am not there, sir. May I please present my case?
I think that at this point, the town has given their staff report. We have been through your application for your zoning text amendment. And at this point, just like I said in the statement that I read, and I'm not a hundred percent sure you heard that statement. If you would like for me to read it again, I would be glad to.
Sir, I have a packet of.
That was a question.
That I'd like to support. I'd like to add into evidence.
Okay, I'm I'm going to read.
I'd like to present.
Mr. Mina, I'm going to read a portion of the statement I read at the very beginning of this meeting at at New Business and it says, we are not here to relitigate the applicant's previous variance application or his appeal of an administrative decision. We will not refer to any individual property in our discussion. This ZTA is not site specific and we will treat it that way. Just as the agenda provides, this is new business. And I said I would ask Mr. Haskett to read the staff report and then have you present your ZTA. I reserve the right to narrow the discussion if it becomes too broad, which I am very much trying to do. The board will have an opportunity to question town staff and Mr. Mina, you, when they have the floor. Once the board has asked their questions, we will begin our deliberation. If needed, the board can call on the town or Mr. Mina for clarification. So at this point, the board has has gone through your application's ZTA with supporting exhibits and I would ask the board if they have questions for Mr. Mina, just like I asked if they had questions for Mr. Haskett when he had the floor. So anybody.
Sir, may I say something, please?
Now, we're we're going to be asking the questions here of you, Mr. Mina, the board.
Sir, I first.
Mr. Mina.
Cliff Ogborne provided you a packet of evidence today.
Mr. Mina, the.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
The the board.
Did not.
The board has read, the board has read your information and we have your ZTA in front of us and we are going to ask you questions pursuant to your ZTA. And we're not, that's it. So.
You are not letting me present evidence relevant to my case.
This is a legislative hearing, Mr. Mina.
Provided evidence and you're not allowing me to present it. Cliff Ogborne sent me an email saying that you provided evidence in support of my town code amendment. And there's there's paragraphs one through ten on the packet of evidence you received today.
Yes, and the packet that the board has in front of you. This is what he's referring to is supplemental information that he sent, which the board received. And so the Mr. Mina, the board has your packet of your packet of evidence and your and your application and they're ready to move on to questions. So they have that packet of evidence that you emailed.
Thank you, Ms. Womble.
Yes, and I'd like to read it to the record for the public. It's a public meeting, sir.
Mr. Mina, are you are you familiar with North Carolina Code Sections one sixty D slash six oh one and one sixty D slash six oh two?
Um, I'm going to say no, sir. Why?
Because those both establish the basis for notification requirements for zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments respectively.
I'm not here talking about North Carolina statutes. I'm here talking about town code three, six, four, fourteen.
Yes, sir. I understand, but that section of the town of Southern Shore, Mr. Mina, that section of the town of Southern Shores zoning ordinance is derived from the authority enabled by the state. My suggestion to you would be to go read those sections of the state statutes.
Sir, it doesn't matter to me where you're you claim.
I I understand and recognize that.
I'm I'm based, I'm my town code amendment is based off the language in the town code. That that the town code doesn't say this is derived from North Carolina state law. Any problems with this code should be referred to North Carolina state law. Town code says what it says and that's what the town is.
I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Charlie, other board members are going to ask questions. Mr. Reeves?
No questions.
Robert?
Sir, I am not done presenting my case. You're Cliff Ogborne.
Mr. Mina.
With information.
We have reviewed all the information that you have given us.
Information into the record, sir.
Mr. Mina, this is not a quasi judicial legislative meeting here. We are simply here to look at a ZTA and how it relates to all of Southern Shores.
Yes, and in.
And we are asking questions of you.
Proving that the DTAs were adopted without notifying the public with posted notice.
We we are not.
I have proving that Wes Haskett was lying about.
We are not going to have you.
You're not complying with notification records.
No, no.
May I please read my the evidence? I don't know why you're acting like I can't read my evidence.
Questions? And? Okay, I've I've got a couple of questions and I would I would ask that you and all the planning board flip over to the more formal document that has the Southern Shores logo on the front of it with that Mr. Mina gave us is in in our packet with all the wheresses. But my I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Mina, and that would be in your ZTA. I'm sorry, page five. It starts off in in your ZTA, item C. All of this is new would be newly added into our ordinances. It says former property owners that have been defrauded. Do you have any proof? Do you have any evidence that people in Southern Shores have been defrauded? Do you have any proof at all that you can bring to us tonight?
Yes, sir. You see that evidence that you won't allow me to talk about?
Do you have any proof that you can bring to us tonight? Absolute proof.
Sir, yes, sir. Yes, I do. You're not allowing me to talk. You want me to present my evidence of fraud?
I I'm just asking you, do you have concrete proof that people in Southern Shores have been defrauded? I don't think so.
Yes, sir.
You've got a lot of accusations and conjecture, but I'm not sure that's relevant into what. but I'm not sure that's relevant into what your ZTA states.
You are defrauded when you are deceived. Definition of fraud is deceived. So when things are done without complying with town code secretly, deception occurs.
You have absolute proof of that, Mr. Mina, if not.
Yes, can I please? Can I please provide you the proof? You asked me for proof, may I please provide it to you?
No, we we are we are soon gonna cut off any discussion with you. And we're gonna discuss among ourselves the ZTA that you have presented to us. I'm gonna give you about.
You're asking me for concrete proof, and I'm trying to provide the concrete proof, sir. And you won't let me talk.
I I don't see it in front of me here tonight.
Okay, well, maybe.
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask.
Sir, you're not letting me talk. It says number nine of evidence in support of proposed town code amendment. Can you read number nine to me, sir?
Number nine, where?
In the packet of evidence in support of proposed town code amendment 36414B. Could you please read that into the record, please? What number four says?
I think the board can adopt the whole packet into the record as part of his submission to in support of his request.
No, but I I object. He is asking me if I have concrete evidence of fraud, and I'm explaining exactly where the concrete evidence is.
I think that in response to your question, Mr. Mina's position is that this packet is his concrete evidence.
Right.
And so I know the board has received this in advance of the meeting, has has had an opportunity to read it. And so I believe as the answer to your question is that Mr. Mina's contention is that this packet.
I'd like to read. I'd like to read it into the record for the town to hear.
But you do not have to.
May I please read it to the record because Cliff Ogren won't post it on the town website with information that I provided for the town. To hear tonight, please. May I please read it to the record, please?
Stand down, Mr. Mina. Board member has a question for the attorney.
Ms. Wumble, with regard to the accusation or the subject of fraud, is it in the purview of a planning board to determine whether or not fraud has been committed? Is that a legal? I mean, is that a criminal offense? Or how how should Mr. Mina? If he's interested in proving fraud, it's not for me to decide whether or not fraud was committed or not. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge.
That's correct. So I think that in regards to the planning board's role this evening, I think it's important to kind of kind of circle back to what the chair was noting earlier in his opening comments. And also to the procedure set forth in the town code, which is this is the first step for a zoning text amendment and its process to get to the town council. The town receives an application, town staff reviews it, town staff does a report, gives a presentation to the board about their analysis of the text amendment. The applicant, although very rarely is the applicant not the town or it is sometimes not the town, but most of the time text amendments come from town staff or at the direction of the planning board or the town council. And so in the situation where the applicant is not the town, the applicant has an opportunity to present to the board in summary their request of text amendment and any basis in support of it. In regards to which hat the board is wearing tonight, you have a legislative hat and a quasi judicial hat. Quasi judicial, you're sitting as the judge. This board is familiar particularly because you go between planning board duties and board of adjustment duties. But when you're here for a zoning text amendment, you have a legislative hat on. And I what I will tell you is even more so is that this board actually has a review and recommendation hat on, which again is legislative, right? Your role based on the statute and the town code is to review a proposed text amendment, the contents of the actual text amendment, determine whether it is in compliance or with the land use plan or any other plans or policies set forth within the town, and then make a recommendation to the town council. That's the planning board's role tonight. You are gonna review, you provide a recommendation to the town council. The town council then is the one who makes the final decision about the zoning text amendment. So in regards to your role tonight, you're not deciding whether there's been fraud or not fraud. I think it is clear from the application and Mr. Mina's presentation that he is requesting a certain text amendment, which is in your packet. He's requesting this text amendment because he believes there's been fraud. And the board at this juncture, you are to review the text amendment based on the laws of the town and the laws in the state of North Carolina. And so you're not determining whether there's been fraud or not. You are determining whether this text amendment, whether you're gonna recommend this text amendment to the town council or not.
Thank you for your explanation on that, Robert, anything else?
Yeah, I have a follow up.
May I like?
A little follow up because the actual text amendment itself, it says property owners that have been defrauded. So therefore, if this amendment were to be adopted, then if I were to come to the town, do I need to prove that I was defrauded before I can take advantage of the text that's in here?
Yes, based on the verbiage that is being proposed by the applicant, there's a condition precedent for a property owner to exercise relief under this code, under his proposed language, at least in that Section C. So I mean, we're if you're talking about just the Section C, there's a lot that he's proposed in this text amendment. But in that regard, yes, a property, just based on that language on its face, a property owner would have to be able to prove that they were in fact defrauded.
Well, it's not just that, it's defrauded with failure without being notified with notification that's not required.
Correct, I meant defrauded in the way set forth in that paragraph. I mean, it's very specific, like they would have to prove that they were defrauded in the nature of the context of that paragraph.
So has that been determined? Has has anyone determined that anyone at the Town of Southern Shores has defrauded property owners such that I could say I'm one of those people and come in and take advantage of this? To my knowledge, no one's been declared fraudulent. Is that correct?
There's not been any legal determination that fraud exists. And so to this point, if that answers your question.
It does, then that means this, there's no point in adopting it because there's no fraud that exists. There's no, that's not been.
May I please say something?
Mr. Mina, we're gonna keep it very brief because when we deliberate, we are not gonna, you know, have questions asked. We're gonna talk about it among ourselves as a board. If we need further clarification from you or the town, we will ask for it. But it will be.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
I'd like to say something in response.
Point of order. Point of order. I think the chair had opened this up for questions from the members, not by responses from Mr. Mina unless he's asked.
Aren't I allowed to respond to what Ms. Wumble said, though? That's what my response is.
No, no.
Like my statement.
Mr. Chair, would you like the clerk to mute Mr. Mina until he's called upon by the board for further question and comment?
Um, I'm not sure I wanna go that route just yet. But, Mr. Mina, did you hear what Ms. Wumble just said? She asked me if I would like to have our clerk mute you while we're having this discussion and unmute when we need to ask you a question.
Yes, I did, sir, I just wanted to respond to what Ms. Wumble said.
That's what we're doing. You're you're on a slippery slope right now of getting muted. But we're 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 gonna go on with our discussion. We're gonna look at at your ZTA, starting with 36414 motion to amend. So I would ask the board to to move over to the more formal document for ZTA 25 dash O two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It it does seem to me that, I mean, if we're in a legislative vote, we're talking about a new ZTA that would have the effect of suspending 14 previous CTAs, fairly serious matter. And it all seems to turn upon the question that Michael raised earlier, which was the the clear meaning of 414B. Whether 414B requires a public notice on any property affected. And as as Michael asked, whether there was a change in the zoning map associated with the the lot width amendment ZTA and the earlier public street amendment ZTA. I didn't see a direct answer to that, maybe from town staff or from from our attorney, whether or not those those CTAs, that specific ZTA, the 2023 specific ZTA cited, did it change the zoning map? Because if it didn't, then subsection B is not clearly by the by the language. To my reading, isn't it doesn't, isn't affected. Can someone answer that question, whether the the an ordinary ZTA, does it change the zoning map? Or is the zoning map when you make something in another zoning category?
I don't, I mean, Michael, you you started down that road, but what do you think?
So, you know, ignoring for the minute for a minute, 36414B. If you look at North Carolina Code 160D dash 601, it establishes the procedure for adopting, amending, or repealing development regulations, i.e. a text amendment. It talks about hearing and published notice. The notice shall be published for the first time, not less than, notice for the public hearing, not less than 10 days nor more than 25 days before the date scheduled for the hearing. In computing such period, the day of publication is not to be included. Then it goes on to talk about notice to military bases and goes through other reg development regulations in the process for those amendments. Then Section 160D dash 602 covers notice notice of hearing on proposed zoning map amendments. Subsection A talks about mailed notice. And then subsection B talks about optional notice for large scale zoning map amendments. And then subsection C talks about posted notice and indicates that when a zoning map amendment is proposed, the local government shall prominently post a notice of the hearing on the site proposed for the amendment or on an adjacent public street or highway right of way. The notice shall be posted within the same time period specified for mailed notice of the hearing when multiple parcels are included within a proposed zoning map amendment. A posting on each individual parcel is not required, but the local government shall post sufficient notices to provide reasonable notice to interested persons. So when you know that, and then you look at the town's zoning ordinance, it's plainly obvious the reading of 36 dash 414B indicates that in addition, and when a zoning map amendment, there's no comma there, there's no if, or any, it plainly reads in addition, and a zoning map amendment, which tracks with the state statute that says when you have a zoning map amendment, you are also posting on property.
This was not.
No, this was.
This was not. This was a text amendment, there was no zoning map amendment. And and all of these 14 other or 13 other amendments were all text amendments. So, I mean, we're here, and the purpose of the text amendment is predicated on a notice requirement that doesn't exist.
Couldn't agree more. And when we look at A and B in in Mr. Mina's information that he's given us, I mean, he clearly sent this to us. This isn't from the town, although it has town logo, it looks very similar to.
Draft.
To a draft that we have seen several other times in CTAs. But 36414, item A and item B are exactly as they have been since the ordinance was written. He has interjected item C as a text amendment acknowledging that A and B are just fine because there's no no addition or subtraction of any language in A or B. Anybody else have anything on the ZTA? Number C.
May I say something, sir?
I just wonder where the if if you if you look at item C and you read through item C, I mean, the very, you know, notion that defrauded is in that language would be a nonstarter for me to, you know, pass this ZTA. But it says defrauded by zoning text amendments made pursuant to Section 36414 without being notified with posted notice as a property subject to the zoning amendment pursuant to Town Code 3641B. 414B shall have 90 days from the adoption of this ordinance. What is the ordinance? What is this ordinance? There's no ordinance in in the first part of Section C. And it refers to this ordinance. Then it goes on to say to submit any applications to the town seeking governance under the town code prior to the amended ordinance. What is the amended ordinance? It's it's not in C, I'm not reading any ordinance in there. Anybody else have any questions about item C in the zoning text amendment? I'm gonna read.
Am I allowed to say something yet, sir?
You may have one statement, and I'm gonna read from the land use plan, and then we are gonna take a vote. So go ahead, you have about five minutes.
Closing argument, like after you're done saying everything?
Mr. Mina, you have about five minutes to wrap up your argument.
Okay, so everybody else has said everything, so I don't need to respond to anything else. I just wanted to make sure before I talk.
Not hearing you too good on that.
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm asking, has everybody said what they wanted to say? So I don't need to respond to anything else that you said there.
I don't think we have any questions of you. Board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Mina? Okay, then, Mr. Mina, you have about five minutes to wrap it up. I'm gonna read my statement on the land use plans, and then we are gonna have a vote. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, I assume when you say wrap it up, you're asking me to present my closing argument. My closing argument, I'd like to, I'd like to say it first, that Ms. Wumble has mentioned that you're in your legislative duties and you're up there deciding whether or not this amendment needs to be made. And the word fraud has been said many times because of the use of it in my zoning amendment. As you're up there in your legislative duties to make a recommendation to the town council, you may want to consider replacing the word fraud with not notified if you feel like the word fraud is too much of a gray area for you when fraud is, the meaning of fraud is basically deceived. So like if a zoning amendment was made where there was a property that was supposed to have posted notice, without the posted notice, the property owner was deceived because they didn't have the posted notice they were supposed to have. But if you don't want to make that conclusion, part of your recommendation of whether or not the zoning amendment should be made with the word fraud, your recommendation might want to replace the word fraud with something other than something like the zoning amendment was made without notification with Town Code 36414B being complied with, which is easy to prove because you get. easy to prove, because you get posted, you get public records responses provided by the town, which proved posted notice was not provided. There's been a lot of argument about the language of 36414B. And the language clearly states, "In addition, and where a zoning map amendment is proposed, the town shall cause to be placed a sign on the subject property announcing the date, time, and place of a public hearing for the purpose of notifying persons of the proposed rezoning." Which means paragraph B is required in addition to paragraph A. For paragraph B not to be required, the words "and" and "where" would not be able to be in there. Those words would need to say if. Paragraph B would say, "In addition, if a zoning map amendment is proposed, the town shall cause to be placed a sign on the subject property announcing the date, time, and place of a public hearing for the purpose of notifying persons of the proposed rezoning." My packet of evidence that I was not allowed to testify, and testify to, says that North Carolina law also provides that a court must construe ambiguous contract terms against the drafter. The drafter of Southern Shores. Paying a filing fee to Southern Shores establishes a contract under law and town code. So which means, since Southern Shores wants to argue that there's two meanings to this zoning ordinance 36414B, which there really is not using English language, their argument is not valid anyway, because they're the drafter of the town code. So the homeowner is the person that is, that getting the terms in their favor under North Carolina contract law. Lastly, I want to make sure you understand that you're up there making a recommendation to pass to the town council, which includes notification requirements requiring mailed notice to affected property owners subject to 36362 under meetings of board adjustments, paragraph B. So my packet of evidence also included proof that your planning board hearing on May 15th, 2023, was supposed to have mailed notice to 75 East Oldwood Trail and other property owners, and did not. And my packet of evidence also proved that, that homeowners weren't mailed notices for the planning board meeting on May 15th, 2023. My packet of evidence also proves that Wes Haskett lied and said, the here, the planning board did not hear the lot width amendment on May 15th, 2023, which the minutes and Wes Haskett's own email, which I provided with my packet of evidence, proved as false. So in my packet of evidence, you find public records requests responding to notification records for several different zoning amendments made. So you have proof that it's a continuing pattern of, I'm not gonna say fraud for your, say, for you, to please you, I'm gonna say, of not notifying the property owners properly. So you have all this evidence of property owners not being properly notified, you have Wes Haskett lying about-
Mr. Mina-
What happened at a planning board-
Mr. Mina, you, you have definitely exceeded five minutes. I'm gonna give you about one minute to wrap it up, and then that's it.
I'm assuming you're saying that I have one more minute for my closing argument?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, it is just in the public's interest to provide Southern Shores property owners an opportunity to obtain a permit under the zoning ordinance prior to them not being notified of the, of a change at their property, when the evidence in my packet proves notification requirements were not met under 36414B or 36, 36, I'm sorry, 36362B, as part of a good faith, good neighbor type of thing towards the property owners of Southern Shores, because I've just proven, under North Carolina contract law, that Southern Shores is in the wrong, and if they want to claim that there's more than one meeting to the town code, it's not the property owner's problem anyway. The drafter's responsible, who is Southern Shores, or who is Hornfall, Riley, Ellison, Mallon, I'm not sure who drafted it. But regardless of how you try to use the words and change the words and give words different meanings and say notification requirements weren't met, I hate to have to say, feel like this, but you're wrong. North Carolina law provides that ambiguous contract terms get, are against the drafter who is Southern Shores. So it's just a, being a good neighbor thing, clearing up any problems that you-
Mr. Mina-
Potential legal problems that you could have in the town.
Mr. Mina, we, we appreciate you making your closing statement. You've had, um, more time than I said when I asked you to start, so we are gonna stop at this point, and, um, I'm gonna read, um, a couple of policy statements-
Thank you, sir. I just ask that you make a recommendation that-
Sir?
That entire town of Southern Shores will appreciate, in, in compliance with North Carolina law, which states-
Sir, we're-
And they do his contract terms against the drafter.
I'm gonna-
Thank you for your-
I'm gonna mute you right now, because you continue to cut me off. So Sheila, would you please mute, mute him? He can hear what I'm saying, correct? All right, I'm gonna read policy two from the previous comprehensive county land use plan that was adopted July 18, 2012. Policy two states, "The community values in the town will continue to comply with the founder's original vision for Southern Shores. A low-density residential community comprised of single-family dwellings on large lots, 20,000 square feet or larger, served by a small commercial district, 56 acres out of 200, or 2,175 acres, for convenient shopping and services located at the southern end of town. This blueprint for land use naturally protects environmental resources and fragile areas by limiting development and growth." Now, as we, the town adopted our most recent comprehensive land use plan, July 2nd, 2024, LUC 3 says, "To preserve the low-density nature of the residential community on large 20,000-plus square foot lots wherever possible, and keep the commercial district small and contained on the southern end of town." LUC 3.1 says, "And supports development, design, and approvals that reinforce the low-density nature of the community and are at appropriate scale for the commercial district." I'm looking at my notes here. In the, in the recommendation of the staff report, down towards the, the bottom, uh, third of the, of the recommendation, it says, "Since all the zoning text amendments that were adopted within the last three years were found to be consistent with the town's comprehensive land use plan, formerly the land use plan, treating an exemption from having to comply with their requirements would be inconsistent with the town's comprehensive land use plan." Okay, one more item. In section 24 dash 27, 4, it gives the planning board the authority to advise the town council concerning the implementation of plans, including, but not limited to, review and comment on all zoning text and map amendments as required by GS 160D dash 604, which Michael had reviewed with us earlier. So at this point, after this review that, let's, after this review that we have had, the board will take one of three actions for recommendation to town council. We can, one, approve the ZTA, two, approve the ZTA with modification, or three, disapprove the ZTA. After we take the vote, I'm gonna read a statement of consistency.
So one of the things I would bring up is that, and I don't even want to acknowledge that the text amendment would potentially invalidate the 14 relevant text amendments, because it wouldn't even do that. Because it's, again, it's predicated, so, so I don't even know that, and this may be for Attorney Womble, you know, we have to base our recommendation in, in consistency with the comprehensive plan, but it's not a question of whether or not we would be opposed to this because of the invalidation or the, you know, some type of stay of the regulations associated with those amendments. Because this doesn't do that. There, there's no, again, it suggests, it applies to people who own property that have been defrauded by an error in the notice, but there's no error in the notice. So even if this were adopted, it wouldn't be applicable to anyone. So, you know, we consider amendments that affect development regulations, but this isn't getting there. This is a procedural amendment. And so if there's any justification in the comprehensive plan, it's that the comprehensive plan supports the development of an orderly set of regulations that are consistent with state statutes. And that's what this ordinance is, and this would invalidate consistency of this ordinance with applicable state statutes. It would essentially force us to acknowledge erroneously that there was an error in the notice requirements, which that's not the case. And so I don't even want to acknowledge that.
Which would mean that you would be inclined to disapprove-
To recommend disapproval, sure.
Anybody else want to talk about anything before we vote, or recommend? Um, I guess for point of order, we would have a motion to do one of three actions.
Right. But, okay, so for clarification, Mike, and I agree, because this is so off the law as an amendment, we're saying, why are we in a position to disapprove something that really shouldn't be presented to begin with? Because it doesn't, and again, the public has the right to present to us, and we, you know, sit here to, uh, take in the information and to ask the questions and then dwell on it. So, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but then, again, how do you cross that line? Or-
I mean, I think it's very clear, you know, that we can recommend denial. I think it's, it's the justification for, with respect to the comprehensive plan, because we're not dealing with a development regulation per se, we're dealing with a procedural change. And essentially staying regulations that are alleged to have been erroneously advertised when that's not the case. So I, I don't know if you have any suggestion there, how to tie that to the comprehensive plan?
If necessary. I, I'm with you as far as the comprehensive plan goes. I don't think it's, um, it, it's kind of a feel-good plan, it always has been. There's no firm chows in there. There's some mays and, you know, with some suggestions, but as far as hardcore, uh, law written into land use plan, it, it's not there. It's, it's suggestive. Uh, and, and beyond that, I don't think there's any legal binding in the language that, that we would void 14, um, ZTA's that have been granted since, uh, May 1st of 2022.
If it even were to do that.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's the struggle.
I mean, that's, that's the weakest, um, argument that I would have for disapproval. The strongest would be that, um, the ZTA is wanting to, um, to change something that, um, does not exist.
Well, and Mr. Chair, I do think that you are right, and just in regards to those 14. I think that the point of that summary is that there are 14 potentially impacted zoning text amendments that could be impacted by this amendment, right? So even if the condition precedent, if you adopted it and the condition precedent was met, there are 14 text amendments that could be at issue if that condition precedent was met.
How so?
Well, like you guys were talking about, which is, it says that if the person was defrauded in that certain nature based on the faulty notice, that they have the ability to have this alternative action, right? And it was within the certain window of time. Well, the text amendments that the town has approved are those 14, approximately 14 text amendments that are in place. So if somebody decided procedurally, they were going, if, if this text amendment was passed, and they decided they were procedurally defrauded, then there are potentially 14 text amendments that the town has passed that people could find exception with. So I, I think is, in terms of, it's a question of impact, more so than it's a outright black and white, it's going to be, those, those are gonna be voided on their face. I think it's more of a, how does this text amendment impact, which is part of what the board has to review.
We, we would, in essence, be rewriting history, is what you're saying.
Well, you're putting-
If we said that, that, um, the ZTA, we'd move forward with the ZTA, and these 14, the history is changed on them.
Well, potentially. You're saying they're, it's open season. How about that?
Well, I still maintain they're non-binding in nature, right? The, the land use plan is non-binding in a lot of regards, as far as ordinances would go.
Yes, I mean it's-
They're more permissive rather than-
It's guiding to, to help boards and towns and counties make decisions consistent, consistently to achieve their plan.
Anybody else?
I, I would, uh, I agree with Mike, and, and I would say that the, the proponent of this zoning text amendment says, you, that the word defraud is not important. If anybody who has not given a posted notice prior to the adoption of any ZTA in three years can, uh, file, uh, a, uh, a, a application to do what the zoning text amendment doesn't permit. Uh, so that's a pretty big loophole. And it's retroactive, is basically says that the, the 14 zoning amendments notwithstanding the, such a, anybody who was not given posted notice the way the app, the proponent of this thing believes that they should have been. But we have established, and we've talked about the fact that it's only, that, that the subparagraph B only applies when there's a change in the zoning map. So the condition precedent, as Mike says, doesn't apply. Nevertheless, if you adopt this, you create all kinds of, uh, problems, uh, from the standpoint of a whole class unknown size could challenge all- could challenge all kinds of things on the grounds that there wasn't a posted notice. I would add that this is a zoning text amendment, and this one couldn't be adopted either under the proponent's proposition unless there was a posted notice at every property in 4,000 properties in Southern shores on the clear basis of what he alleges or argues in his case. So I think that it doesn't, it would be, it would be something inconsistent with the way the town is operated in good faith and the way that we have sought to adopt zoning text amendments in clear process over years to make sure that we make those balanced decisions that you were talking about earlier. So on that basis, while I'm not a voting member, I do not think we should recommend adoption of the subparagraph C to 36.
Thank you, Charlie. Robert, anything before we?
I would like to say that if, I think it's quite clear that we're following the state regulation and the state legislation in how public notice is to be made to individuals. If, in the future, I definitely oppose this proposed text amendment, but if the town council would request us to, perhaps we should, we could perhaps add something there that explains what B means. This does not mean that we're going to notify every single person that may be affected by every single text amendment. Anyway, that's all.
Jan?
Nope.
Okay. Once again, I'm gonna read these three options. The board will take one of these three options, and the motion will include that after the review, the board will take one of these three actions for recommendation to town council. Number one would be approved. Number two would be approved with modifications. Number three would be disapproved. I'll entertain a motion to make that one of three. As you make the motion, state what your choice would be. Anybody?
I make a motion to disapprove this text.
Thank you, Jan.
My second.
Michael seconds, thank you. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor of Jan's motion to disapprove ZTA 2502 as written? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? None? We will disapprove this ZTA or recommend disapproval of this ZTA to town council. And I want to read this statement that is required. It's a statement of consistency. "But by this action taken today, the planning board agrees that this action is consistent with the currently adopted comprehensive land use plan as previously stated and is reasonable and in the public interest." Would you all agree with that statement?
Say that again?
How is it consistent?
Saying no is consistent.
Not inconsistent.
That the action is.
That the planning board agrees that our action.
Of disapproving.
Yeah.
But this approval is consistent.
That our action today, that is, right, maybe I do rewrite that. Our action is consistent. Would you like me to read it over again? Amended statement of consistency. "By the action taken today, the planning board agrees that our action is consistent with the currently adopted comprehensive land use plan as previously stated," which I read, "and is reasonable and in the public interest."
Agreed.
Okay. All righty. Anything else we need official town information on with this? Lost my agenda, but there it goes. Public comment, again, after new business, none seen. Planning board member comments. I'll start with Robert.
Can you come back to it?
I'll be glad to. I'll start with Charlie.
No, thank you.
Michael?
We had a meeting of the Entry Corridor Committee last week, I believe. They're all running together at this point. I think we've had five meetings all together. Lot of just introductory information gathering. Mr. McLendon attended the last meeting since they're all public and open to the public. And right now, we're working on a community survey related to that effort. So hopefully, there'll be more news out there soon.
Right. Jan? I've got nothing. Announcements, Wes?
Yes, sir. The next regularly scheduled, next regular planning board meeting is scheduled for May 19th, 5:00.
Anything on the agenda or the horizon in that regard?
None.
Okay. Time for German. I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Jan?
Pardon? Can I make an announcement? I said, come back to it.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that Saturday, May 17th, from 12:30 to 4:00, is Coastal Studies Institute's annual open house. So we'd love to see everybody come out there and visit and meet the researchers and faculty. It's May 17th on Saturday.
Okay. All right, I've made a motion to adjourn. Jan has seconded. Is there any discussion? Do you think so? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Meeting.